Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would rise please, Mr. Russell White will lead us in prayer. Mr. Carraway will lead the speech.
Come by with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon this community. Of course, we thank you for all the folks that have come out to join us tonight to participate in our self-governance experiment. We ask that you give everyone that's here tonight a safe passage home. Ask you to look over our first responders and our folks out in our community that protect us and keep us safe. All these things in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We love you, which is standing, nation under God, visible for thee and justice.
Before we start the meeting, I'd like to make a statement for us. I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and various requests tonight will be forwarded to the commission for final action on December the seventh, two thousand twenty-one. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at that meeting, please see Ms. Carraway Harden to obtain a request form to speak. Need a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
No move.
Hold them favor signified by raising your right hand. And we need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Favor signified by your right hand. The first item on the agenda tonight is massage operator's license with Mr. Will Butler.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a request for massage operator's license by Chris Secarino, doing business as List Salon, Daysby, eight oh seven B O C R Shrive, as it's for on-premise and also mobile massage services, which means all requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Corino here. Need to obtain a motion to approve or deny H two A one.
I make a motion that we approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Hold them favor signified with your right hand. Mr. Butler, the next item.
This is a massage operator's license for Kristen Luke at thirty-six eighty-five Riverwatch Parkway, Suite one oh five. This is for onsite massage services only, which means all requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval.
Ms. Luke here. Then obtain a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Kristen Luke at three six eight five Riverwatch Parkway, Suite one oh five.
A second? Hold them favor signified by raising your right hand. Okay, next item is Ms. Jennifer Neal of temporary use authorization.
Yes, so this is a request for temporary use authorization at thirty-six ninety-four John's Road on zero point four six acres, currently zoned R four recreational residential. There's a location of the site. The zoning is surrounded by R four zoning as well. And this shows a site plan. The applicant's requested to place a twenty-nine foot travel trailer on the property here during the construction of their permanent home. The existing home that you see in this picture has already been demolished and removed from the property. They are in the process and may have already completed the purchase of the property and have not applied for permits yet because they were in the middle of the sale of the property. And staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? I'd then obtain a motion to accept or deny the temporary use authorization.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at thirty-six ninety-four John's Road.
Second.
Hold them favor signified with your right hand. One thing I failed to mention before we started, Mr. Cox, the chairman of this board, had shoulder surgery yesterday. That's the reason he's not here. And Mr. Futch is out of town on business. Normally, we have a quorum of five. That's the reason it's on three of us tonight. Final plat approval, Miss Danielle Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for the property at four seven eight Wilkins Road to create five lots. The property is a total of seven point six seven acres and currently split zoned R one single-family residential and M one light industrial. This is the location of the property near the end of Wilkins Road. I mean, see, the M one zoning is part of the strip along I twenty that was a county-initiated rezoning. The majority of the property is zoned R one and it is under those standards that the property is being subdivided as residential lots. Wilkins Road itself is a county-maintained road, but it is not a county-owned road. It has no dedicated right-of-way. That is part of why this plat is in front of you this evening. The other part is due to it seeking to create five lots. And this is the aerial of the property. This is the existing house on this corner. The property was previously a mobile home park, but the mobile homes, I believe, have all been removed at this point. So the proposal is to subdivide this property into five lots. One would contain the existing house and then four additional building lots, meeting the requirements for the R one zoning district. These lots would be on septic systems and the soil survey has been completed and approved by the health department. This is the existing site and the existing road. We also had traffic engineering review this proposal due to the condition of Wilkins Road. They did indicate they have no concerns with adding the additional lots in this location and staff is recommending approval of the plat.
Any comments, questions concerning this issue? Need to obtain a motion to accept or deny H two E one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Paul Okojic, creating five lots at four seventy-eight Wilkins Road.
Have a second?
Second.
Hold them favor signified by raising your right hand. Next item on the agenda is planned revision of Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir, this is a minor pod revision for fifty-one eighteen and fifty-one twenty Washington Road on one point six four acres. And it's a major revision, sorry, it's a minor revision, that's an error, to revise a sign allowance. Here is the location, which is along Washington Road, close to Riverwood. Here's the zoning. It's the original PUD zoning was Jessica Creek from two thousand and one. And the S one zoning to the south is Madison Heights. And the surrounding zoning is RA and more PUD for Riverwood. Here's a close-up of the aerial that shows where the Eclipse storage is under construction right now. The site we're looking at is where the Dunkin' and Tenet sign is, which is on the north side. And there will be another retail store going in the middle of those two. Here is the plat. And here is the approved site plan. So you can see where I've highlighted, number one is the Dunkin's store and number two will be a second tenant. And we're looking at signage allowances for those. Can you go back to that one a minute? I just wanted to explain that because of the topography on the site, there's several retaining walls built across here and the driveway goes this way. So what happens is that you actually enter at the back of the site into the front of the business. And because these are allowed one principal sign for multi-tenant buildings, the request is for multiple signs. Here are the site photographs that show where the site is. And these are the elevations of the store, which will have two tenants. One is the Dunkin' Donuts. So the miscellaneous signs will meet the sign code. They are allowed one principal building, one principal wall sign to up to seventy-five square feet. And the request is for three smaller signs that will add up to maximum of seventy-five square feet. So this is the side facing the parking lot. And the elevation facing Washington Road and the rear parking lot as well. And the future line juice map. Staff is recommending approval for the minor pod revision with the condition that the maximum of three principal signs with no more than one on each wall, that total a maximum of seventy-five square feet are allowed for each tenant.
Questions? I'd then obtain a motion to accept or deny this sign process.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file R Z two one 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 zero eight minor pod revision for the property located at fifty-one twenty Washington Road to modify the signage allowance.
Have a second? Hold them favor signified by raising your right hands. Now, we're entering the public hearing portion of this agenda. And on any of these items, if someone from the audience would like to speak, you'd need to come to the microphone. Say your name. First item on the agenda is Ms. Montgomery, excuse me.
Yes, sir, this is a request for rezoning and a major pod revision for property at forty-eight forty-eight Wrightsboro Road. The request for the rezoning is from R one single-family residential to pod planned unit development to add eleven point four acres to the Wrights Farm pod. This is the location of the property under consideration for rezoning on the south side of Wrightsboro Road. Existing Wrights Farm to the east of the property and Kingston wraps around the south side of the property. The property is currently zoned R one, single-family residential, as is most of the surrounding property, with the exception of the Wrights Farm pod. And the request is to rezone the outlined portion of the property. It's approximately eleven point four acres down here on the eastern side to be added to the pod. This is the existing site at forty-eight forty-eight Wrightsboro Road. And a photo of the existing construction at Wrights Farm. This is the approved plan from the original zoning for Wrights Farm. It included a maximum of three hundred lots at the time. And the proposal is to revise that pod plan to include the additional eleven point four acres at the western end. This adds up to twenty-seven more lots and an additional detention pond to handle the additional development. The section would continue to retain the same standards as the adjacent section of Wrights Farms. They would vary between fifty to seventy-foot lots. The one modification that has been made is that the fifty-foot buffer around the perimeter has been shown on this section that is wider than what was shown on the previous approved concept plan. But it is something that has had to be added as the development has proceeded. So this should simplify the plan review process to have that included up front. The addition also allows for additional farm space on this western end of the property, kind of continuing the theme of Wrights Farm. This property is located in the neighborhood's character area on the future development map. This area is intended for a single-family residential development and this is a very appropriate use in this area. The staff is recommending approval with the conditions that carry forward from the initial rezoning for Wrights Farm. So clarifying that the minimum buffer along Wrightsboro Road is fifty feet. Required buffers must be supplemented as needed to meet the standards for section ninety dash one thirty-nine. And that the seven and a half foot side setbacks apply only to the fifty and sixty-foot lots when they comply with the design standards outlined in the original pod. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
We can vote once on part one and two together?
Yes, sir.
Anyone that would like to address this issue in the audience? Questions here?
So we're gonna do this one and then the next one? Are we gonna do the rezone and the pod revision together? Okay.
I'd then obtain a motion to accept or deny parts one and part two together.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with the conditions, the R Z two one 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 zero five portion of the property at forty-eight forty-eight Wrightsboro Road from pod, R one to pod, major pod revision modifying the approved site plan for Wrights Farm.
Have a second? Hold them favor signified by raising your right hand. Next item is Mystery.
Yes, sir, this is a major pod revision for properties on Baker Place Road, William Few and Warriors Way on eleven point two acres. The current zoning is planned unit development and they are undeveloped at the moment and it's a major revision for mixed use. Here is the site on the corner of William Few and Baker Place Road. Is a PUD zoning, which was part of the original Hidden Creek rezoning from two thousand and six. There are several PUDs around there subdivisions for, which have single-family homes and town homes in there. Here's a close-up of the aerial and the existing site. So out of the original PUD, the dentist office is the first business that's been developed on the corner and so the remaining parcels are undeveloped. These more photographs of the existing site. So just a little history on this, the Hidden Creek plan was approved in two thousand and six. This is the master plan that included single-family homes, apartments, townhomes, and this portion that we're looking at had twelve acres of townhomes, which was eighty-eight units that you can see highlighted in yellow. This is a aerial from two thousand and seven, where the PUD was already approved. And you can see there's not a lot of houses around there at the moment. Some construction in Ivy Falls and Ashbrook subdivision does exist. This is the two thousand and nine PUD approval, which is revised. And this section of the townhomes was actually removed from that. And the master plan for the PUD changed the street layout and some of the lot sizes as well. Here is an aerial of two thousand and fourteen. This was when the original, the PUD for Warriors Walk came in. Got the Chamberlain Ridge subdivision built. You've got retreated at Baker Place under construction. And you've got the school and some of the offices on William Few built as well. So the two thousand and fourteen pod actually approved on this site that we're looking at was for a section that had forty-four townhomes and business and professional uses along Baker Place Road and commercial retail uses along William Few Parkway. The original, that plan was more or less a bubble diagram at that point. And it was understood that if this was approved and the site is developed, they would have to come in for a major revision to show the layout. From two thousand and fourteen, these were some of the architectural styles that were proposed for the development. And the current owner and developer is looking to keep that similar to what was approved. So the dentist office on the corner is the first business that was built from that PUD. And here is the plat. And the development plan that's submitted with this major pod revision. So this does show the section that has the townhomes here. It's still proposed to be forty-four, same as the original zoning. The dentist office is here. And then this section will be developed as the professional uses and this section developed for retail, which is the same as a two thousand and fourteen approval. So the traffic department has given us some conditions as included with this. The driveway on, to Baker Place will be limited to one driveway shown there. And then the buildings will be arranged around that. At this point, it's a concept, a development plan that's basically a concept plan. Once the final engineering is done, you know, there is sometimes a shift in roads or buildings to make everything work. And the, sorry, go back to that one. The traffic conditions will say that the, up here is the ride-in, ride-out on Baker Place Road. This one on William Few side is will be ride-in only. And then on this one will be the full access. So the future development map shows this as the neighborhood's area, which does allow residential development and uses such as civic schools, churches, things like that. Since this was already rezoned for retail from two thousand and fourteen, staff is comfortable recommending approval for this layout. And the recommendation is approval with the conditions from planning. It's the townhouse community shall include benches and trees in the common gathering space. Signage shall be of monument style compatible with the sign on the adjacent parcel, which is the dentist office. And then the traffic conditions that we just pointed out on the, on the plan, includes staff recommendation.
Before we go any further, it needs to be understood, as Ms. Mystery pointed out, that this was zoned in two thousand and six and then revised in two thousand and fourteen. So tonight is not about whether it's to be zoned to be built or not. It's already zoned for that. This is just a little change in the total picture. And very frankly, it's a lot better than it was in the past, what's being done now. So saying that, if anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission with this issue, come to the microphone, please.
My name is Kay Jones and I live on Long Creek Falls in Ivy Falls subdivision. I come to you tonight not in disagreement with the plan. I come to you as a resident and as a former city councilwoman in the fifth-largest city in Tennessee, who failed miserably at infrastructure before they allowed building and before they allowed planning for how traffic would flow, the resources in the area. Right now, if you use William Few in the morning, evening, or afternoon, doesn't make any difference, it is always congested. It's two-lane most of the way. There's no ingress or egress for first responders. When they get into a position where they only have two lanes, they can't go to the side because there's ditches. They can't go down the center because there's only a couple of turn lanes. I don't think just adding turn lanes would help this problem. I believe we need that road and I understand it's probably on the books to be redone, but that road needs to be done before we dump all this traffic into our neighborhoods. Right down the street from this is Baker Place. On Baker Place is the, another exit and entrance to Canterbury Farms. And I understand they're fixing to put about a thousand houses in there. They will exit and enter on Baker Place and then they will come to William Few to get access to the freeway and to, to other parts of the city. Right now, Long Creek Falls is a racetrack that is at the intersection of Baker Place and William Few. It's right on the opposite side of Baker Place. We have speed humps. They can go over there at ninety-five mile an hour. I promise you they can. They do it all the time. And we live right in the middle of that. So our neighbors are concerned, we're concerned. We have three schools within that small area. We have a middle school, a high school, and an elementary school on Baker Place. Traffic congestion when school is letting in and letting out is horrible. Cars just sit in the road on William Few now. I can't imagine what's gonna happen when you add all this development without doing the proper homework first and making sure the road is ready. The ability, again, for first responders, my husband's retired law enforcement, I'm an ex-EMT. I know what the problems are. We will lose lives if you put all of this traffic onto the existing William Few and Baker Place. Baker Place has become a cut-through, but not because they go, you know, into Wrightsboro Road, but most of the traffic comes into William Few. So my issue is really with what are we gonna do with all the traffic that this will entail? The doctor's office is not a problem right now because it's small and it's off of the main road. But if you start doing right turn in and right turn out in an area that's already congested beyond capacity. There's also apparently a development going in down the road on William Few, past Baker Place, because they're already tearing everything out of the property. All the trees are coming down and I can only guess that it's another subdivision.
You understand that it's already been zoned?
I do, I'm just asking.
We couldn't stop this if we chose to.
I'm just, I'm just asking that that be a consideration in approving it because William Few cannot handle this traffic.
It's, it's already approved. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
I just want to voice my opinion because I live in that neighborhood and when I can't get an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car.
All that was approved before those neighborhoods were built and I'm sorry about that.
I moved here in two thousand and seventeen, so I wasn't aware of that. But I just wanted to, just wanted to have my opinion.
I totally agree with you about the traffic. I'm sure everyone else up here does. And the counties making every effort to study.
I understand it's on the books, but that's probably years down the road.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Does anyone else that would like to speak about it?
Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering. I'm the project engineer and the applicant could not be here tonight, so I'm here on her behalf. I would just like to say that we had discussions with staff about the project, about the conditions, and I've spoken with the applicant about the conditions we have proposed tonight from the staff. Applicant's good with those conditions and I'd be glad to answer any of them. I have.
We're reducing this, right? This plan does not go with the original two thousand and six that had eighty-eight.
That's correct. There are forty.
Cutting it down to forty-four, cutting it in half.
And I'll also point out, you know, we can't fix the, the traffic on the exterior roads inside of the twelve acres. But one of the things that, you know, we've worked on this, this property since the original zoning, when it was taken out of the Hidden Creek PUD. One of the things that staff brought up early on, which was important, is that there's interconnectivity. So I'll just point out that from a traffic standpoint, if you're anywhere inside this development and you wanna go somewhere else, if you're at the dentist's office, wanna go to, you know, the retail up front, you can do that inside the development without getting onto Baker Place or so there's interconnectivity between all of the parcels of the property. And, and you're right, Mr. Dempsey, this, this was approved before most of the houses were built. They just, you know, built up and surrounded the site before the site got developed. So they were first to the game, so to speak. But from a, from a overall perspective, in terms of the use of this land, this plan is the same use that was approved before. It's just a little more specific in terms of the detail of the layout.
Well, in reality, it's less traffic the way you're doing it now than it was in the beginning because of the
On the streets.
Number of townhouses.
That's right.
Still a traffic problem. We all understand that.
Right.
We work as hard as we can to try to solve those problems as well as others in the county. I agree with the ladies up here beforehand. I wish we could do infrastructure before we, and the streets and roads before we do the development, but a lot of times it doesn't work that way. Thank you for addressing this. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Sterling Packer. I'm a, I'm a resident in the Hidden Creek subdivision. And we just found out about this and again, we moved into the neighborhood in twenty nineteen, so we weren't aware of all the history. I'd just like to add a couple of points and concerns that we have. Obviously, we've talked about the traffic, but it's actually worse than that. I know it didn't take into account Fort Gordon. When Fort Gordon opened Gate Six and closed Gate Two, that's all the traffic west, more traffic on William Few and, and going down Baker Place. And major developments with the Calari subdivision expanding and also the Highland Lakes that's up, up William Few. All that traffic's gonna come right down William Few Parkway for people that are going to the interstate, going to Gordon. So we're concerned about that. Also, we just don't see a demand. There's within, within a couple of miles, there's the, there's shops and restaurants in Ivy Falls and, and at the Kroger, the new This is a, this is a residential area. There's nothing there besides houses for, for a couple of miles. And we just don't see a reason to have this, understanding it's already been approved fifteen years ago. Finally, the, the high school pickup and drop-off problem. Yeah, because it's so overflowed on William Few, there's a lot of parents that drop off in the student parking lot. And the school's always putting out reminders to not do that. And quite frankly, parents are ignoring that. If there's a parking lot right next to Grove Town High School, that's gonna turn into another pickup-drop-off point. And nobody's gonna be able to thank you for taking that into consideration.
That would be up to the school board.
And?
Not a bad idea, though.
Well, it's, people are going to do what they're going to do, and I might be one of those parents that drops off in the student parking lot-
You might contact your school board member about that. Seriously.
Or talk to your neighbors about maybe that big yellow thing that comes through the neighborhood? Pick their children on there, for goodness sakes, you know, because we all know when school's in, don't we, because of the traffic?
Work for everybody, though. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone up here have any questions? Are you, come out of here, sir. This will be the last one that we'll discuss this issue with.
My name is Jeremy Pennington, I'm a resident of Hidden Creek also, and I just have a, I guess, a question. Respectfully, Mr. Dempsey, you had mentioned that you wish you could let the infrastructure come first before development. If that's not done by the planning commission, then who, sir, would do that?
I'd have it is up to us to do it, planning department, but-
Right.
There are times like this where it was on the way back that we-
I, I understand that, and like Ms. Jones, I don't have an, an, an issue with the development itself, but I think the timing is the critical thing. Thank you for your time.
And the board commissioners are the ones that do the, you know, make the decision on where your tax dollars go as far as, because that's a county road, William Few. That would, that would be who would actually control when the road gets widened, and it's in the books now, but like you say, it's, it's way too late now.
Um.
I mean, we've got all these houses now, I mean, it's, we're going to, we're going to fix that road, but maybe, you know, we put the heart, cart, cart before the horse.
Wait a minute, if you have something to say, come to the microphone, please.
The retreat at Baker's Place.
What's your name and address?
My name is Barry Jefferson, I live at 744 Birch Creek Drive. And one of my concerns is if you are the people and the personnel that are responsible for doing the voting, and we know that it's a problem, why can't we look at, look at this particular problem holistically and maybe push some things back to get that road widened first? Or, I understand-
It's already been approved, and we cannot stop this. That's what everybody doesn't seem to understand. If we chose tonight to vote against it, we'd just be putting ourselves in a legal logjam that they come right back and get approved anyway, because it's been approved before now.
And there's no way to halt that deal?
No, sir. No, sir.
So the intent for the meeting tonight was really just to, it's a done deal?
To approve these minor changes within the, the whole situation itself, and to let the public know that we were approving those. It's not to vote for zoning, it's already been done. And that's something we don't have any control over. There's a lot of pieces of property in this county that's already been voted on with zoning in the past. People don't realize it until it's time that the developer wants to build on it.
And so we just have no recourse?
No, sir. Not for this one.
All they've done here is taken and moved some buildings around that were approved. I mean, and, and that, but by the rules of the way the planning goes, if they make more than a certain percentage of change to the original plan, it has to have a public hearing, and then we hear it. And basically, they're, they're closing two driveways into one, and that's, you know, this, like I said, this is already approved, and we're just having to approve, let the public know that they've made a change, a major change, to the original plan that's a PUD, a Plan Unit of Development.
And I guess I can just assume that they took into consideration that the neighborhoods-
In 2006 and 2014, they weren't anything close to that.
Exactly, because I can remember riding by-
Including the schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Nothing but woods there, so-
Yes, sir.
So again, things have changed considerably, and even though those zoning or whatever was approved, I, it burns me to find this out at this particular point, with me being fairly new to this area.
Well, it wasn't for the county, it's not the county's responsibility to notify everybody about something like this when you bought your house. That's when you and the realtor.
So the realtor should have told, been accountable to-
I'm not necessarily saying that, I'm just saying that it, it just depends on what year you bought and when you bought, and none of these situations stay the same.
Yeah, I got it, because I, there's no way a realtor in this area, if they hadn't been in it that long, would know of something that was approved so long ago, so I understand.
They should know, if they're a good one.
Hmm. And, and we're, we're faced with a, a, a good problem that's, that's created this problem. Everybody wants to live here. Everybody wants to live and participate in what we've got in Columbia County, so it's kind of created this rush to build to get people that want to come to our community in here, and then we've kind of let the, let the roads get behind.
I think we're getting repetitive about this now. Thank you very much for coming up.
All right, thank you for your time.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept or deny these changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, RZ 211106, major pot revision for the properties located at Baker Place Road and William Few Parkway to modify the approved site plan for Warriors Walk PUD.
We have a second. All in favor, signify with your right hand. Next item is Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a request for rezoning from R4 Recreational Residential to S1 Special at 3850 Camper Club Road. This property is located near the end of Camper Club Road, out on the lake. It's off of Mistletoe Road, this is the nearest public road that is actually paved. It's about a mile and a half or so back to the, the property off Camper Club Road, which is a, a private road. The property is currently zoned R4 Recreational Residential, as is most of the surrounding property, with the exception of the, the one S1 piece there that's for an existing voting club. This is the aerial view of the site, it is largely undeveloped, and an existing site photo. The applicant also submitted some existing site photos showing some of the existing, more previously existing, buildings on the property. May be debatable if you can still call them buildings at this point. That's not showing up very well, but, so this, the applicant does have a phased development plan. The first phase would consist of kind of general cleanup on the property, timber harvesting, underbrushing, repairs to existing electrical, plumbing, solar, and existing structures on the site. She would be including sale of the first couple residential lots in this phase, and use of up to 40 campground sites. And what's not showing up, at least very clearly on my monitor, is kind of the campground sites would be located generally around this portion of the property. There are previously existing campground sites on this property, it was previously used as a campground by the previous owners. So she is planning to kind of upgrade and retrofit those and put those in temporary use during kind of the development of the project. The first phase would also include the start of the, the horticultural space at the front of the property. This would include construction of the barn, which would include an office and dwelling space for a farmer to kind of manage that area, as well as areas for composting and small livestock, and construction of a public recreation trail around the perimeter of the site. A major part of this first phase would be paving of Camper Club Road to provide access to the property, and we'll, we'll get into the, the details of that a little bit later, but that would be part of this first phase. In Phase Two, campground operation would continue, the clubhouse would be built on this parcel, whi, which would contain two guest suites and commercial kitchen space. There would also be a farm store added at the front of the site, kind of a grab and go store to serve the campground and other people on the property. And the four guest cabins or cottages would be constructed on this parcel. Those would be available for short-term kind of vacation rental. And then in Phase Three, the members pool would be constructed, that's on the back part of the clubhouse parcel. Model home would be constructed, and the remaining residential lots would be sold, and the campground for, uh, use would be phased out as those lots were sold. So the, the campground is intended to be just a temporary use while the, the property is developed, and then at full development, it would no longer exist. All of these uses would be served by wells and septic systems, there are no county utilities out here. Some fall under public use definitions, and that requires coordination with EPD, so not just our local health department. The soil survey for this property has not been completed at this time, so it has not been reviewed by the health department for the, the septic system locations. The residential lots are intended to be developed to R4 standards, so the same as the current zoning, so there's no particular concerns with that. Basically, they could be subdivided as shown under the current zoning. The clubhouse and the community facing areas, we are recommending to use the requirements for community recreation uses as per the, the county code. That includes provision of paved parking, landscaping requirements, and buffering The applicant has submitted several examples of the type of development she is proposing. The intent is for it to be relatively low impact, trying to really keep the, the natural beauty of the property. Both the narrative and the covenants reference the use of LEED standards, so green building standards, and low-impact stormwater design. The major issue with this project is Camper Club Road. It is a private road with no right-of-way, so it's effectively an easement. In order to proceed with this development, this road will need to be established as either a formal private or public road to allow the, the proposed uses. This requires agreements from several adjacent property owners for acquisition of right-of-way and improvement of the road. The applicant is proposing to operate up to 20 of the campsides sites and sell up to three of the residential lots prior to paving of this road, which could be approved with the S1. However, the, the majority of the development is going to require this road improvement, and at this time, we do not have written agreements from the affected property owners that, that that's going to be feasible. In terms of future development map, this property is located in the open space character area. This is largely due to its location out near the lake. Most of its surrounding property is owned by the Corps of Engineers, which makes it typically open space. However, this property is privately owned and has been for some time, and some development is allowed under the current zoning. To be clear, that includes the 10 residential lots, which could be subdivided under R4. A clubhouse, pool, and recreation trail would all be allowed as typical kind of community recreation uses, and small-scale agriculture is allowed under the current zoning. So some of what she wants to do is already allowed under R4. What the rezoning allows is the temporary operation of the campground, the limited commercial use in the form of the farm store, and the re, ability to rent the clubhouse for events for up to 75 people is the request, and then the use of the guest suites and the vacation cabins as short-term rental facilities. As far as future development, again, it's in this open space character area. However, the intent is for the development to be very low impact, utilizing the LEED design standards and low-impact stormwater designs. Additionally, campgrounds and similar recreational uses are very common out near the lake and in the S1 zoning district, and the farm store is a fairly minimal commercial use that is unlikely to generate significant traffic. So overall, the uses may be appropriate in this area. However, the issue with Camper Club Road and the need for the agreements with the affected property owners is leading staff to recommending postponing this request until those agreements can be reached.
Comments, questions?
Start with the applicant. Go to the public.
The applicant here. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and say anything to us? Answer any questions? Just state your name and address, please.
Jeanne Whitaker, 3850 Camper Club Road, Avenue 30802. Good evening, I understand the vote has been postponed, and that is okay. We do have 11th hour approval in writing from Mr. Bert Pollard, one of the properties that the 1.2 miles of road that we're proposing to pave passes through. There are two property owners that that 1.2 mile passes through, Mr. Bert Pollard and Ms. Margaret Brooks, managed by, by Mr. Lynn Brooks. Lynn Brooks has not given us his agreement yet, so I'm going to go and track him down in person. He has the information, he's looking at it, he's looking it over, so he didn't initially say there was going to be a problem. Mr. Pollard has put in writing that he's okay with it private or county road. I am leaning toward private right now. I think, hang on, this is a little short. Yeah, I'm leaning toward private right now. We are considering widening it, as well as paving it, up to the entrance of my property. If anyone else wanted to chip in neighbor-wise to bring it on down to the end of the road, I've spoken with McKnight, who owns at the end, they're not interested in chipping in or paving from my property to there. I don't pass through McKnight property, nor do I pass through the Campers Club, um, property. So much Mr. Bert Pollard says yes, Mr. Lynn Brooks is still being, is still thinking. So I'm fine with postponing the vote for that. If I can go ahead and talk about the rest of the property, we have a PowerPoint somewhere, or not. Oh, okay, well, I'll go ahead and tell the story of this place. Olin Chemical bought this back in the 70s from the Corps of Engineers for $10, with covenants attached to this property. The covenants state that this property must be used for group recreation and/or cottage sites, and any other use can enact a, the Corps can enact a reversion clause against the owner. I knew this when I bought it. However, the Corps has given me problems, and part of what a sustainable neighborhood can accomplish is to perpetually solve those problems in a sustainable way. The first time I heard the term "sustainable neighborhood," I thought, that sounds like some California communist scheme, and I was not interested. However, further study of this concept shows that what the Corps has given me, which is a problem, I can solve to make a neighborhood that's really fantastic place for people to live. I read your Vision 2035. I understand you're trying to incorporate more green space and more public, public recreation space into the county. By adding a, and I'll let you look at the infiltration swell picture down on the, down on the left, by adding a public trail to the neighborhood. Now, make no mistake, this property has to be used for recreation, that's what the covenants say, and I can do that in a variety of ways. All of those ways are going to increase the traffic on the road, which is why I think it's a good idea that we pave it. That's what we're talking about earlier, right? Getting the infrastructure right before the subdivision or the development goes in. I'm happy to do that. So this is, by incorporating the public recreation trail around the entire perimeter of the lake, that meets the requirements for public recreation, so does having an event center on the property, place for people to have family reunions, where your whole family could actually show up and have some vacation cabins to stay in, a, a rental suite over the clubhouse so that the bride can get ready before, before the wedding. Paving it, we need to pave it anyway. If people are going to come and use a public access trail, they need a place to park. And it's nice to have a little grab and go store where they can grab a nice, healthy drink on their way out from their morning run. This neighborhood is, this neighborhood is 10 lots. We are still a little backed up with the soil, the Level 3 soil test, there's only two people around here that do that, and they're very, very busy with these subdivisions. So getting, I've offered to pay them more to come out and do it, so we'll see if that works out. But I'm looking forward to getting this Level 3 soil test done. The conditions for running the campground, the reason that the campground can, can, needs to be phased out in a few years is it's not necessarily part of a long-term neighborhood, but great for helping maintain and build the infrastructure required for these projects to begin with. This, the trail that goes around the, the perimeter is also an infiltration swell. That is a concept where you ditch on contour, you fill it full of wood chips, and you plant in the spill berm on the downhill side. We're planting on planting around 1,000 trees. Combination of native plants and food production systems for people, wildlife, and pollinators, that's a nice trail to walk along. It also provides us with a degree of security, because a lot of those things that we're planting along that trail are very thorny, brambly things, you don't want to walk face first into. It keeps people where they're supposed to be, it keeps the traffic from both the campground and the neighborhood long-term where it's supposed to be. We don't want people wandering off into the core property and what they're going to do. We do have two docks and a boat ramp that come with this property, and we want the traffic to flow in the right way, the foot traffic to go in the right way. I also think that public access terr, trail gives us a nice set of eyes and ears in the neighborhood. We're going to be using cameras, we're not going to gate it. We like the fact that people are using the property and people are enjoying the lake.
You know, excuse me if interrupting, but since we're postponing this to do with the road, we really gonna have to go through all this again with the other two commissioners- since we're postponing this to do with the road, we really gonna have to go through all this again when the other two commissioners are here.
We can do that.
I think it would be best to just hold off until we have everybody here.
All right, well, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody who might have shown up tonight that didn't understand the vote was going to be postponed have, so.
How much time do you think you're going to need to get this other person to give you right-of-way?
I'm going to go see, I know where Mr. Brooks works, I shop at that Ace Hardware Store, so I'm going to show up. And tomorrow and, or, yeah, tomorrow, Monday, I've got some time off at work. I got a time off award for, at work, so I can spend a few days tracking Mr. Brooks down. I think it's a matter of, it's a matter of, it's, people have to study it, these are companies I'm dealing with. Mr. Pollard had to consider, do, what's the long-term implication to me if this is a county road? Do I want it to be a private road, do I want it to be a county road? There's logging operations, I've assured Mr. Pollard that any future logging on his part is not a problem.
Two weeks, long enough, or you need four?
Two weeks, I think, we can do it.
Sure.
I am sure, I don't know that I can accomplish a soil threat test in two weeks, however, I think I can get the I have met with the health department and the EDP about how many sites I can run off of a well and have a septic inspection schedule for the septic dump that's existing, there is an existing septic dump for the campground, I'm going to have that inspected as well.
Mr. Turner, what do you think?
Well, I don't doubt her veracity in attempting to get it. The question that I would have is, logistically looking at in two weeks from tonight, packet will go out next week. With the short week, it'll be early in the week, so my, my only concern is, is we won't have that information by the time the packet goes out, unless you're able to turn around in the next, you know, by Monday, kind of Tuesday timeframe. And I don't want to put you under that sort of constraint necessarily. So I guess that's more of a question for you guys, if you have to or want to have that in hand. I think that's a quick turnaround, you know, the
We're gonna have to have
second meeting in December, while it may not be entirely ideal for the applicant, might buy enough time just in case, and may also get that soil survey in by then, or at least be underway with it.
We're gonna have to have the road situation before we
That's probably the, the primary issue is the road situation. And I know she's, have one of the two, and may be able to get that second one. My only concern is, is we may be back here in two weeks with that possibility being resolved or not, and then asking for another postponement, and we usually only do two. So maybe to err on the side, if you're agreeable, postponing it for a month and putting it out to
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth of December.
I can do that.
That would give you more time.
That'll give you a little bit of flexibility in case you have to go back and forth with
Yes.
Let's do that.
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Now, do we
You'll, you'll need to ask if anybody's here to cite him as well, knowing that you're likely to postpone it.
Would anyone, is anyone here that would like to speak about this item while we're here, talking about it? Come to the microphone, please, sir.
Name is Steve Johnson. I'm representing the Campers Club that's down this thirty-five, thirty-eight fifty, which we're at, down the road within a half a mile. We, we got response, a feedback from, everybody had the information for the development and the phases, phases that they're wanting to do. And this is the club's response to that. And that is, we highly opposed of the abundance point project opening their site to the public prior to paving a, a Camper Club Road. Now, what we have here, what's established, road is a gravel road, average width of it is fourteen feet. And we have three bad curves that are blindsided. Well, on average, an RV or camper roughly ten foot wide. And if we have wet conditions and we have to get off the road, we will get stuck. That's just one of the concerns. Express the, the concern of liability and mostly safety of our community members and family members and visitors that travel on Camper Club Road. Camper Club members approved, disapproved of the opening of the twenty sites of the forty that's available before the road comes paved. And the downfall is, is, is not having it paved with excessive traffic and excessive weight load, want to generate excessive erosion to the road. And if, in the event that this is passed and she follows through, and maybe the road gets paved prior to any establishment set to open up for public entrance, our concern would be downhill where she paves. When, with all the surface area on asphalt, then we're going to have a tremendous amount of drainage from that surface draining. And that was, that was our major concern, was the road itself being paved prior to opening up the public.
Question? You come back to the microphone, please. That's us.
Representing would be opposed sites being opened.
Before the road's done, you mean?
That would still be open. That would be an excessive amount of traffic.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me a second.
I think this is a perfect issue that you guys can work out in that, in that month that we have between tonight and
And we wouldn't vote on any of this tonight anyway, we're just voting to postpone.
But, but I do, but I hear what both of them are saying, so I think
I understand, post the both sides of that conversation.
Work for this, work to an approval on this.
All right, thank you both for coming. Okay, we need a motion to, excuse me.
Yeah, you'll need a motion to postpone if that's what you decide to do, and again, we talked about a couple different meetings, but it sounds like the December sixteenth planning commission would be amenable to both the planning commissioners and the applicant, so.
I'll make a motion that we postpone file RZ twenty-one dash eleven dash zero seven, voting from R four to S one for the property at thirty-eight fifty Camper Club Road to December sixteenth.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, see if I will raise your right hand. That concludes our business for this evening, do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. I'm sorry, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, come on up to the microphone.
I didn't get the opportunity to come in when you guys were talking about the parcel on the corner of William Few and Baker Place Road, and I, everybody probably addressed the traffic issue already, so I'm
Yes, ma'am, they have.
here to talk about the traffic. I'm here on behalf of the children, I'm an administrator at one of the schools on that corner, and if you come anytime in the morning, of course, the traffic is there. But one of the biggest problems that we're having with the high school is truancy and skipping and tardies. And putting that on that corner is going to create another issue, children not being able to leave the school and go to those retail places and fast food restaurants and things of that nature. The ROTC practices on that course right behind where we want to tear down the trees, and the band also practices in that parking lot where they're wanting to put townhomes. So all of those things that they're wanting to put on that corner, the high school uses that area every, all the time.
But that property doesn't belong to the school?
I understand what you're saying, but we're just
You know, we can't dictate what to do with that.
Right.
Were you here when we made the statement that this property was rezoned for this in oh six and
Long time ago prior to this.
And did, our hands are tied for this development.
Okay, all right.
I don't mean to cut you short, but
I just was wondering if anybody had thought about the children.
Yes, ma'am.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Diana, turn the motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen.